Say what?
I'm glad you said it. Thank you.
Did I?
You said it.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start with our regular council meeting. Like to call the meeting to order, and I guess we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do the roll call again, please, Molly.
Yes, all the person Henry.
Here.
All the person Shaver.
Here.
All the person Bailey.
Here.
All the person Dean.
Here.
All the person Rumor.
Here.
All the person Price.
Here.
All the person Eiker.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
Present.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to four, public hearing. A, public hearing number one. Topic amend seven dash four, City of Delafield, 2030 master land use plan map. Location DLC 0792074, 439 St. John's Road, DLC 0792069, and DLC 0792078, 411 St. John's Road, and DLC 0792073, and DLC 0792060, unknown address on Wisconsin Avenue and St. John's Road. Owner Hendrix Commercial Properties LLC, City of Delafield. Matter amend map seven dash four, City of Delafield, 2030 master land use plan map from the institutional category to the medium density residential category. Is there anyone that would like to speak to public hearing number one? Anyone that would like to speak to public hearing number one? Seeing none, public hearing number one is now closed. Move on to item number five, approval of minutes of October 3rd, 2022, regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes from October 3rd.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, number six, City of Delafield citizens comments. Any topic you'd like to talk about, now's the time to come on up. Any citizens comments, come on up.
Suzy Thompson, 700 Milwaukee Street. While we're talking about development and we're talking about traffic, and there was a traffic study in tonight's plan, and it was done, I believe, the beginning of August. Something happened last Friday that I wanted to make a note of. It was absolutely shocking to my husband and myself. But we live on Milwaukee and Oneida, as most of you know. There was a school bus going eastbound on Milwaukee Street, stopped near Angelina's, had the light, the arm out, and the lights flashing. Two children got off to cross the street, and a car came from the area of Milwaukee and Genesee and zoomed around. Luckily, the bus driver blew the horn and told the children to stop. They almost got hit. We were so speechless. By the time we could call 911, that car was gone. We knew it was a little red four-door with what appeared to be high school kids in it. The children, the parents had gotten, the bus was gone. But this happens all over town. And I know off of Highway 83, a lot of people have talked about the traffic problem on Nagaweka and in other areas. What was discussed, separate subject, but what was discussed about the building of commercial buildings along 83? I think it's been repeatedly said, people don't want to see that. And instead of 30 to 50,000, to talk about 100 to 250,000 are massive. And what first came to my mind is, okay, it's going to rain. Where's the water going? We worry about residential, where's the water going and the drainage? But I think from an aesthetic point of view, having been a real estate broker when Brookfield Barker Road and Industrial Drive developed, and some beautiful businesses that are now beautifully landscaped, if you've ever been to the Humane Society, it's in that area. Those buildings are not 100,000, they're smaller. And it is a loop that goes in and out. But it was a problem, anybody owning residential homes in the early 90s across the street from that development. So when people say, we don't want the noise, and we talk about how many trucks and how many in and outs, and car doors slamming from employees, it would be a direct impact. I'd like to see what the city has to say about medium and low density housing for that area. And if you put something else along 83, but I don't think we need to pack in industrial there. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to make citizen's comment? Come on up.
I'm Kathy Patacin, and I live in St. John's subdivision.
Can you please provide your exact address? And your spelling of your last name, please?
P-T-A-C-I-N.
And then your exact address.
My way.
Address.
708 St. John's Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing number one went by so fast, I didn't even.
You're good.
Okay. Real quick. Number one, there's almost 100 acres for sale currently just south of 94. We all talked about huge industry and all this coming to the Delafield. Isn't that a potential site for some bigger buildings if that's what Delafield needs? I don't know. Number two, I tried to read through the traffic study that was listed on the agenda. I don't know, how can you do a traffic study if you don't even know what the volume and density is going to be for that high intensity area where the post offices? I don't understand that. So I guess, I'm just worried how we're going to make a left turn. Right now, we can't even get out of our subdivision. There's a lot of questions, and it seems like every time I come to one of these meetings, something new is being presented that's just unbelievable. So that's all I got to say. I trust that you'll keep residents in mind that are in our little subdivision.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Another hand back there, come on up, please.
Can I approach?
Sure, sure. Hand it out, we'll pass it around and share if we need to.
What I'm handing out is just one of your average weddings done. Sue Jurgensen, 403 Wisconsin Avenue. What I handed out is an average wedding where they park and use that St. John's.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic, which park?
Oh, the church that is just south of like Wisconsin Avenue off is at St. John's. I lived there, so I should know this stuff, I'm sorry. But the church, you know, is used for weddings and everything else, and they park solidly along St. John's Drive. They also park down Smythe. And I don't really care, I mean, they have to park somewhere. And with the housing that's going in, it's very concerning. It's like, where are they going to actually park? I'm not opposed to, obviously, people and everything moving in, but I think we need to work with St. John's. This is going to be rude, but everyone talks about wanting to save St. John's. And it is a pivotal, in our society, in our community. I really feel they put us on the map. I mean, they made the namesake, where do you live, Delafield? Well, where's that? Oh, St. John's, everyone knows St. John's. I mean, so, I mean, that is my concern, because it just appears to me that every square inch is being developed. And I'm not opposed to development, but I have concerns on the school and their success because of who they are, what they represent. I mean, I am infuriated that Smythe House is being removed, and that is the founder of St. John's. So I find it, as someone who likes history and into that, that to me, it's just, if that's the one house that can be saved, I mean, most places when they build and grow, they don't necessarily tear down everything. The other big concern is, when you're adding volume to an area, you should not be taking away crossroads. Public safety, fire, rescue, everything, when you have to go around. Think, I had a major gas leak at my house, and everyone was cut off from going anywhere. And this is about a dozen years ago when I bought it. It's like, where are we all going to file through if we have to get around? I mean, it's a logical concern of us living there. So those are my big concerns. I am concerned still with St. John's. I mean, it's been around for 100 years, and if something goes wrong, that place can go down and it can be gone. And that's part of our history that it might not matter, you know, for our society, but in the future. So I really hope that I don't fall on deaf ears when I say this. And my voice is shaking because I'm just trying to stay calm over an area that I freaking love. And I want to keep it that way, and I want to always stay proud of living in Delafield and not turn into West Alice or a Burbs or what O'Conamock has turned into. I mean, we've all heard it. You know, we're just not happy there. We have such quality of life, and I would like to just kind of keep that and have trees. Let's really push the developer not to get rid of every single tree, not have sidewalks, where they'll take out the whole row of everything. So I just want you guys to consider that. I mean, I know I'm a small little bug on the planet, but just, just think about it, please, is all I ask. So thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you for your comments. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Who else would like to do citizen's comments? Anyone else? Come on up.
Peggy Matt Seaworth, 2520 Nagaweka Road, and it's M-A-T hyphen, okay. I just, it was a surprise visit, or visit, notice that I got that you guys were having a meeting about this tonight. And I just want to reiterate, thank you Danielle and Mark for speaking about, speaking up for the residents in that area where the industrial park is supposedly going in. I just want to reiterate that I hope the City of Delafield remembers all the residents. And the reason why we moved here is the look and the space that we all bought in here to live, you know, in harmony and stuff, instead of having these light pollution with industry and more roads and traffic. And I just wanted to voice that as a concern for all of us that moved out here. And I've been out in City of Delafield and the town of Delafield for over 30 years. And that's, I just hope we don't turn into an O'Conamock, Peewaqui.
We won't.
Pardon?
We won't.
Uh, I don't know, looking at that stuff, it's super scary.
We're good pictures.
I know, but surprises have happened. And we all know that, but thank you very much. And even though we might think we're a bug, it takes many ants to move a mountain. So don't give up. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else? Come on up.
I apologize, I tried to get up here, but got shut down pretty quickly on the St. John's. Can I make comments on that?
Well, sure, go ahead.
Chris Miller with Miller Marriott Construction. I'm going to reiterate some of the same points I made at the Plan Commission meeting, and I do appreciate the comments of the community. You know, reflecting on the comments that have been made, even just watching the presentation as I came in here, I think it's refreshing to see the back and forth in the community. I'm supportive of the medium density. I think it gives the residents in north assurances that will match similar density to them. You know, again, I'm going to reiterate from the last meeting, traffic studies are meant to be studies on how the development will affect traffic. Many of the traffic concerns are from vehicles coming from outside the community. So I think everybody should kind of keep that in mind as we do these traffic studies and they get presented. We also have presented a well study from a hydrologist as well, basically saying that the wells, even if you include the golf course of 50 lots, would not be a measurable, this, measurable drop in water from that aquifer. So I wanted to just point those out. I think the trees are important. We've already done a tree starting on the property, the intent is to keep as many as we can. I like trees. I think they make the property more valuable. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak during citizen's comments? Alrighty, end of citizen's comments. We'll move on to number seven, special order of business, brief presentation and summary of proposals by each solid waste and recycling collection contractor. Basically, I'm going to ask each contractor, as Tom had asked before the meeting, to, you know, keep your presentation to about five minutes. Then the council will have an opportunity to ask some questions about your proposal, and then we'll move on to the next company. So the first one I have here on the list is GFL, if you could come up, please.
Hi, good evening. My name's Jason Johnson. I'm the area government contract manager for GFL. And I want to first off say thank you for the opportunity to put a proposal in for the city. Had a lot of dialogue with Tom. And just to give a little bit of background, GFL, we're new to the area, but our management team is not new to the area. The way GFL came to be is after the purchase of Advanced Disposal, where myself and the rest of our management team was employed in picking up the garbage for the good folks of the City of Delafield. When Waste Management purchased Advanced Disposal, in order for them to close on that purchase and to avoid any types of a monopoly, they had to divest a number of assets, and GFL purchased those assets. So that's how myself and a lot of the managers ended up at GFL. So we're very familiar with what the residents here expect in terms of services. When we were with Advanced Disposal, some of you that lived here long enough remember when we were called Violia, you remember when we were called Superior. So we've had a lot of name changes, I've got a lot of different shirts in my closet. I've been with the company for 20 years, but what it really boils down to is our team knows what you guys expect, and frankly, what you deserve in terms of quality services. I know about two years ago, when Waste Management took over, things didn't go as great as many of folks probably had hoped. And it's created a real great opportunity for our company and our expertise. Back in January, we took over the contract in the town of Delafield, the City of Brookfield, and a few others. And I would urge you, maybe you already have spoke to some of those references, but they are very happy that our team is back. Are we perfect? No, but we're pretty close. And when there are issues, you actually know who you can get a hold of. The response is very good. One theme I've heard tonight is quality of life when it comes to planning, when it comes to a lot of these things. And I know with these garbage proposals, there's a couple different options out there. But one that we have the experience in, we have experience in all of it, but is our up the drive service. The town of Delafield was very close to switching to automated services about this time last year. And they ended up having to call, basically, an emergency meeting at a 2 o'clock on a Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember, and it was packed. The folks there, basically, the attitude was, we moved here, we wanted this quality of life. And I kind of underplayed it in a lot, over the years of how important up the drive services was. But those folks did not want to lose that service. They were willing to pay for it, they wanted to keep that. So when I hear through talking about the development, we're the experts at it. We've been doing it for many years. We were doing services here for 20-plus years, like I said, under various names, but really the same management teams. Couple different people, but then we brought others up through the ranks. So we would really like that opportunity to come back, show you guys the services that we can deliver. Tom himself lives in the City of Brookfield where we took over. And I think he would give us pretty high marks in terms of the transition there. And, you know, there's always going to be some hiccups, not going to lie. But we managed through those and got the City of Brookfield cleaned up quite quickly. One of the big things that we also want to stress is our local customer service. When we were Advanced Disposal, we did get away from that model, and it did not go well. One of the commitments that GFL has made is that we are going to keep our customer service local. So we're just located up the street in the Village of Heartland. So we'll have our call center there, it's already there, servicing the folks in Brookfield and other communities that we've taken over in. And we've also added, as a further value-added service, when you think of the bulk pickup, some of the, some folks just have to get rid of that recliner. They can't wait for the next pickup. We're also putting our transfer station available to residents within the City of Delafield, where they can come to the transfer station and use that free of charge for any bulk items that they just can't wait to get rid of if they can get it over there. Usually, someone has a pickup truck or something that they can help out with on that. But again, we just appreciate the opportunity. We would really be happy if we could be partners again and work with Tom and the staff here and deliver the services that the good folks here deserve and expect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, so I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So basically, if I'm understanding this correctly, you, for your base bid, you're offering automated service for everyone. But where you can't turn around a big commercial garbage truck, is garbage pickup at the streets included in that bid? Or does the people on the dead ends or wherever you can't turn around, do they have to pay the $200? Is that?
Okay, so good question. So we gave two proposals. One is what we would call our curbside proposal. It may or may not be automated. So we broke down a map, and again, it's based on our 20-some years of experience of knowing, oh, we can't go down, you know, just some of the ones that I remember from times I was out there. Key Point Lane, it's really not accessible with a large commercial automated truck. Barker River Road, and where Lance Drive pulls off of that. Blue Spruce, Milwaukee Street, especially like First and Second Street, in those spots, you really can't get what you would call an automated garbage truck down those. So in those areas, we would offer the pickup truck service. So similar to what you have now, but it would be roadside. So we would come through with that style of collection truck and pick those folks up. Now, in the areas.
At the end of their drive.
At the end of their driveway, correct, roadside. In the areas where we, it's pickup truck service, we would offer those residents up the drives services. There would be the annual fee of $200, and that would be identical to the service that you have now.
And you bill those homeowners that did it directly?
We would bill those homeowners directly, and we'd continue that billing on an annual basis until they wanted to discontinue it, but we would go up the drive. For the areas where we can access those homes with our full-size automated trucks, those folks would not have the opportunity to continue with up the drive service.
And that's when your second proposal comes in?
And that's where the second proposal would be just to stay the status quo of services, where everybody gets up the drive, we would service it with the pickup trucks, and we would continue it that way. When we had first met, we were reluctant to provide an automated, or a roadside, I got to get away from automated, a roadside proposal because of our experience. But just knowing that, you know, you would probably like to see the comparison, we wanted to put something together, so we got our guys back out and put our memory caps on and started driving back out through the neighborhood and checking it out where we knew we could, where we couldn't. If anything had changed in the last two years, really, not much has. But that's how we built our two proposals.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if we could have John come up next, please.
Good evening, thanks for having us. My name is Dan Youngages.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Yes, I will, it's a difficult one. It's J-O-N-G-E-T-J-E-S.
Thank you.
Many ask me that question. So John's Disposal, we're a family-owned and operated business. John's actually my grandfather, so I'm third generation at John's. And we just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to submit a proposal to your city. Just like GFL, we proposed multiple options for the city to consider as well. So we proposed the up the drive collection, where we are also fairly familiar, we're a bit newer to the area. We've provided up the drive service in the Village of Elm Grove for the past seven years, also the Village of River Hills, and then recently, we just started up the drive service in the town of Brookfield. So we are fairly familiar with the up the drive service. Additionally, we did also provide a quote for roadside, or the automated collection with carts. I think one thing that's very unique about our proposal, maybe considered to the rest, is if the city does choose to switch to the automated collection, we would offer any resident to subscribe to the up the drive collection service. So if a resident just says, we don't want the big carts, they would just, we would, we would roll it out where they could call us and they could be a subscriber for that service. And we offer that service in nearby, somewhat nearby communities. We just rolled that out in the City of New Berlin, and we also offer that in the City of Peewaqui and the City of O'Conamock as well. So that's one thing to consider that's a bit unique about our service. We also offered a bulk items collection, so that would be residents can call us, and they are allowed two collections per month, so that's up to 24 calls per year. So if some people have a lot of stuff to get rid of, they would just call us and we'll come collect it. And that, we quoted, it's all broken down in our proposal, but that's $2.05 a month, and that is optional. So we do have some communities that don't subscribe to a bulk items collection, and then we would offer residents to call us. It would be at a premium, if we're not offering it, you know, as part of your citywide program. And that was $95, like, per collection is our going rate in 2022. We don't encourage it, we highly recommend going with the monthly program for bulk. We also have our call center, we have three locations, and our call center is local also. We're in the City of Whitewater. And we, what else do I want to highlight? We also have some premium services that we would include that you could consider, and those are fairly well spelled out, and Tom did a really nice job of outlining some of those premium services. But being a family business, we do really try to promote our high level of service. And so one example is, is that we'll even allow residents to subscribe for, like, we call it walk-up service. So our driver literally will get out and walk all the way up their drive, the resident's driveway, roll the cart down for the resident. They'll dump the cart and then roll it all the way back up. That would be as if the city chose to switch to the roadside service. And it gives my drivers a little bit of exercise that they need as well. With the up the drive service, there's some other premiums that we include as well, and we're fairly familiar with it, as far as something even like in the garage service. And we're fairly familiar with that, that kind of service that we provide, also in the Village of Sheniqua, and in River Hills, and then in Elm Grove as well. So those are some things that we're very familiar with, with the up the drive service. Last but not least, I would just encourage you, and I think it's in your packet that's put together tonight, is to just glance at our appendix B, which is all of our references. And again, thank you for the opportunity. We feel as a family-owned and operated business, we can provide a really personal high level of service. And what was mentioned earlier this evening, we are one of those unique third-generation family businesses that we feel can provide a really personal high level of service. So that's what I have for you tonight, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to get my head around bulk, is the question I have for you. And I guess what is typical bulk? What are examples? And then what might be things that people might not know are bulk, but actually are bulk? And then, are there abusers of bulk? Do you have some residents that just seem to have excessive amounts? Do you have some residents that just seem to have excessive amounts of bulk? For whatever the reasons may be, I'm just trying to understand this bulk.
Uh, bulk is a, it's a, it's an interesting animal that we wrestle with often. The answer to your question is, uh, yes, people probably are confused by it. And bulk, um, should have parameters because it does get abused. And so we work to try to define that. And there are residents that sometimes struggle with it. And so what we really appreciate with our call-in bulk program is that we're able to, uh, identify maybe violators or something of that sort. And what my drivers will take a picture and they'll essentially call it into my office and, um, say, hey, this is a pretty excessive pile. And so, um, we will take it. And then when that resident calls us again, the customer service rep will see, uh, ooh, we had a note from the driver. And they'll have a discussion with the resident to talk about the excessive pile that they put out last month and work on some of the parameters for bulk. So bulk is, um, it's definitely important. It's, I think all the more if you would transition to the roadside with the cart program, because then it's really contained to what can fit inside of their cart. And so, you know, a call, a, a couch, a recliner, a sofa, kitchen table and chairs, those are all items that would qualify as like a bulk items collection. So, so bulk is, it is in a bit a, a hot topic, but, I mean, we've, we've quoted you here, um, 24 bulk collections a year. They just have to call our office and then we'll, they'll get them on the schedule and we send a separate truck into the city to come through and collect all of the bulk items. And one thing I didn't mention, but our bulk does include twice per year, residents can substitute their bulk for an electronic item. So, um, we keep track of that and they can say, I got a TV I want to get rid of. That would be, they can do that twice a year as well. Does that, someone answer the question?
So like a small window air conditioner, is that bulk?
Yeah, that, so that'd be right, like a free-on appliance and that would be included as well. Our trucks are separate. Like I said, it's a separate truck that comes. Even a refrigerator would be included as a bulk item.
Yeah.
Yes.
So for roadside service, anything that basically doesn't fit in the can is bulk?
That, yes. Now, one other thing to note for the roadside service, so that would be a pretty significant change for your city. I mean, you guys are used to the up-the-drive program. There are significant savings as well. Um, the, the one other thing we would, that, that is included is, is that we would offer additional carts to your residents. So if somebody says, this 95-gallon cart just isn't gonna cut it for my family. I got five kids. It's not gonna work. They can subscribe with John's for additional carts. And then they would pay John's once a year to have an additional cart at their home if, if they feel they need additional carts. And then on the contrary, other people will say, that thing is way too big. It's not gonna work for me. We have one, uh, cart we offer that's half the size. It's 48 gallons. And we will exchange the large carts for the small carts at no additional cost to the resident. So a lot of the, the older folks would say, hey, it's just me and my wife. I got one bag of trash. That thing's way too big. Um, it's almost like a Merry Christmas to them when we're rolling them out in December and we give them the smaller cart and then everybody's happy. I, I missed one other thing I should tell you that is unique about our proposal. We also, uh, quoted weekly recycle collection. If you would choose to go with the curbside automated collection. We're finding more and more communities are switching to weekly collection for recycling. That would be another unique thing that changes is that right now you have weekly collection for both garbage and recycling. So if you would go with the, the curbside or the roadside service with the carts, we're just including weekly recycle collection. So that, that's an additional 26 collections a year. And residents don't have to try to know what's their week for recycling.
Um, how do you address like the narrow roads and the, the?
Yeah. So for John's, how would we address the narrow roads? Um, I haven't been looking in your direction, sorry. Um, we serve a lot of communities that have challenges as well. One that came to my mind was over, um, the Lake Geneva area. It's actually called Lynn Township. So we would assess those challenging roads as well. And all the roads that would be a problem for us to get our large truck down, we would send a smaller, what we call the up-the-drive truck in, on those roads as well to serve those residents. And we would, we would need it to be roadside as well. Um, but we have the smaller trucks to serve those challenging areas as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, um, optional items, like, uh, optional yard waste collection, is that a decision? Is that all or nothing for the city or is that on an individual level?
Yeah. So yard waste is yet another interesting thing that we quoted you. So it's like a quite a large à la carte thing that we wanted to give you. Yard waste would be, um, it's, it would be citywide and residents would have to call us to, to receive a cart for yard waste. But it would be a citywide program and it, and it's not, it's not per resident.
Okay.
Am I, am I explaining that correctly enough, Tom, or should I clarify?
A city would get charged per resident, even if only a third of the residents use it.
Yes.
That's the basis of your pricing model.
That's exactly right. There's, there's a bit of, we're, uh, maybe you'd say kind of just we're, we're predicting how many are gonna use it and that's the price point that we chose for the city. Regardless if everyone in the city uses it or only a third use it. That would be the rate we need for the yard waste program.
Thanks.
Is that a service that you could do like a couple of times a year? Like if you did like, you know, for a month in the fall and a month in the spring as people are doing their?
We, we, yes, we-
You could do it that way?
We didn't quote it, but we provide that in many other municipalities that we serve. We just, this is the city of Franklin Yard Waste Week where we are, you know, collecting the whole city. And I think Franklin does about six or eight collections a year, some are in the spring and some are in the fall. So that would, we didn't quote it, but if we, you know, if you guys chose to go with John's, that's something that we could negotiate with the city to just provide a few.
So on yard waste, what I'm familiar with is you go to Menards or Home Depot and you buy these brown bags. Is that the type of process you're talking about? So if your yard waste doesn't fit in the brown bags, it's?
It's not what we quoted. So we quoted to actually provide a third large container.
Okay.
What, what Danielle's asking about would be the brown bag program. We'd have to negotiate that later. In our proposal, it was for a rollout 95-gallon cart and that's what they'd be limited to. But we would provide that service. I think we said we'd provide it April through November and that we would come weekly to collect the yard waste.
And what's typically in there? Leaves?
A lot of, a lot of people bag their grass too. So when the grass is grown in the summer, they put their grass in there. We like to mulch our grass, um, and they could put leaves in there. And then when they're cutting their perennials and basically what we tell people is anything that grows in their, in their yard. Not dirt and not wood chips.
Dan, do they-
Or garbage.
Do they have to bag the material before putting it in the cart?
No, they can, no, they put it loose in the cart. It would go loose in the cart.
Do they keep the cans all year?
They would keep the can all year, yes. It would be a 95-gallon rolled automated collected cart.
Thank you.
It'd take you all year to get rid of your leaves in a typical house in Delafield with that.
It's a, it was just something we-
By the time we got to the end.
It's something we threw in there. I think that is, uh, kind of fairly low on the totem pole here of, you know, what, what you guys are kind of up against for at least the garbage and recycle collection.
Well, great. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your, uh, opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, LRS Badgerland Disposal's up next.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. Susan Malmanger, Badgerland. I know you were gonna say that. M A L, M A N G E R. Thanks so much. It's nice to meet you all. Thank you for this opportunity. I think Tom threw us in the mix for a bare bones opportunity here. Badgerland Disposal started in Milton five, six years ago. Um, we were acquired by LRS, which is based in Chicago. So they basically back us. They're trying to rebrand. Everybody knows Badgerland. We've been around. Um, we're moving this way, meaning that we opened a shop, um, a service place with a few reps there now and about 12 trucks in New Berlin. We're newer to the area. Um, we started servicing the village of Waukesha this year and the village of Sussex will be starting in 2023. We did not offer you up the drive. So what I've given you guys is just a thought of if you are not going to give that, um, kind of what that looks like without all the perks. With that said, everything operationally that these guys have talked about, real standard across the industry, okay? My managers were all from advanced disposal. They also know your community. They know how to service your community. Any roads that can't get down with a big truck, they do have a satellite truck. They're just not willing to offer up the drive where someone can call and pay for it separate. Okay. With that said, there is walk-up service if someone has a disability or is physically unable to get their cart to the curb. So we do that for, um, a handful of residents in all the communities that we serve. Just wanted to let you know like where we are, um, who we are, um, that we're growing this way. Um, but we're kind of new and what we're offering is a little more limited. Um, I shouldn't say that because it's really just the up-the-drive that is not on the price sheet. So kind of interesting. Um, what else did I want to tell you? I think really they've kind of touched on all the, the nitty stuff. I did give you an option for weekly or every other week recycle. Um, and then an option to include an additional cost per home every month so that everyone would have two bulk items included per month. And the bulk rules are the same across, across the industry. You have to call them in. I don't know how long have you guys had a chance to look at the proposal? If you have any questions for me or our team, you know, or who we are, what we are, um, please let me know.
It might be in here, but what do you charge for a bulk pickup?
If you want to include it with your program.
No, just if somebody, if a homeowner called and asked for it.
Yep. So it's either $50 or $60. A basic bulk item or non-free-on appliances are 50 and then free-on appliances are 60.
Okay.
If you didn't want to give them any bulk option, just pay as you go.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Last but not least, we have, uh, Waste Management.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Tony Knecht. I'm the public sector manager in this area for Waste Management.
Into the mic, please.
What's your last name?
Yeah.
Am I a little too far away?
No, you need, yeah, you need to be closer.
Am I good now?
Yeah.
Good. All right. Thanks for the thumbs up. Uh, my name's Tony Knecht. Uh, I work for Waste Management.
Can you spell that, please?
Sure. K N O E C K.
Thank you.
Uh, I've been working with Waste Management or for Waste Management for the last 13 years now. Um, obviously you all know, we acquired Advanced Disposal about two years ago. Uh, in about two weeks, it'll be two years ago. Uh, with that came a lot of challenges. Um, as you were probably aware of when we first started, we had to overcome a lot of obstacles. Um, things from equipment that we received, uh, which was not maintained, was not in working order. A lot of things had to be fixed, uh, staffing challenges where we expected people to come over in that acquisition and they didn't, so we had to fill those roles. Uh, we've been working tirelessly since then, uh, have turned that around in our Heartland Hauling Office. Um, they've done a very good job, uh, over the past year and a half of fixing and improving those things to a point of, uh, we have been servicing municipalities on a, a level, uh, that we're used to, uh, now, uh, which is a good thing. Um, again, uh, I know there were struggles. I know there were concerns at the beginning. Uh, but again, the bright side is we saw the light at the end of the tunnel. We did the things that we needed to do to fix those things, uh, those concerns. And, uh, we are, we're back in a good place again. Uh, we've been in Wisconsin, uh, doing business as Waste Management since 1959. Uh, we have not been bought or acquired. Um, we, we usually make good business decisions and there's a reason why. Uh, you guys have all the proposals in front of you. Tom did a great job of, uh, providing not only a summary, passing on the full proposals. Uh, so I don't have much to add, uh, obviously with three different companies talking before me. They kind of went through the ins and outs of, uh, what's curbside service, obviously. That's carted, uh, wheeled carts with lids on them, 96-gallon size. Usually there are other sizes, uh, that we can offer. Uh, but that, uh, is usually the most efficient, effective way to service communities nowadays. Um, majority of communities are done that way. Uh, and obviously with the smaller lakeside roads and things like that, we do, uh, have those challenges in other areas. Uh, and we do have, uh, specific vehicles that go down those roads, uh, pickup trucks, just like we use now for up-the-drive. Uh, so with that curbside, uh, program, uh, as you can see on here, uh, 96 or 64-gallon carts, uh, for drill, both trash and recycling. Uh, additional carts, uh, can be gotten by a resident if they do, do need one, do want one. They can, they can rent it, uh, depending on if it's a trash recycling cart on a monthly basis or they can pay an annual, uh, fee. And they can have additional carts if they need to. Uh, we also have hardship walk-up service, which is where a resident would be able to physically, um, wheel their cart down from their driveway, uh, down to the curbside road. We, we have our drivers get out, get those, bring them down, empty them, take them back up to the garage again.
And what's the verification process for that typically?
The resident usually contacts the municipality and just lets them know, hey, I'm having a lot of difficulty. I've got a long driveway, whatever it might be. And the municipality just informs us and they, they usually will tell us, hey, you know, 1, 2, 3 Main Street.
Do you ask for any documentation from the municipality or?
Some do, uh, some do because they, and it's not of our, we're not asking them. We're not requesting that. We're taking the municipality's word for it. But some municipalities actually do request that.
What would be typical?
Uh, just the doctors know, saying, you know, Mrs. Smith, uh, physically cannot do this. Please provide walk-up service for her, uh, and that's all they need.
Okay.
So, uh, and that's provided no additional charge, uh, just like our colleague, uh, had mentioned before. Um-
But Tony, you have an expectation about how many residents would take that, right? As far as before it become excessive?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We have a lot of, uh, experience with that, uh, with different municipalities. And I'd say out of every 5,000, you might have 10, 15, uh, depending. You know, some municipalities are a little bit more, some are a little bit less. So, uh, but also with our proposal, um, we do have the Christmas trees. They're not gonna be collected en route, uh, as they used to be. Uh, but we do have an option for that in there where we provide roll-off boxes for residents that do have live Christmas trees that want to get rid of them. We also have the bulk item collection, uh, which is once a month. Uh, and the only thing we ask on that, there's no additional charge for it, uh, is just that, uh, we're notified of the addresses that have that bulk item. For the simple fact, it's more efficient if we know where we're going instead of driving up and down every single street in the city, trying to figure out who's got an item out, who doesn't. Uh, and it's a very simple process that we do with other municipalities too. Uh, but that's less wear and tear on your city streets as well. Um, and then finally, uh, each resident would get a brand-new cart. Uh, we would provide them. Uh, we would maintain them throughout the contract, uh, if anything were to happen to it, uh, normal wear and tear. Uh, we would replace it, replace lids, wheels, whatever it might be. So, uh, I do appreciate, uh, being here tonight. I know you guys have quite a decision to make, uh, so I, I respect that. And if you guys do have any questions on our proposal, happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to, uh, 7B, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Proposals Received From the Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Contractors, Including the Impact on the Budget, the Level of Service to Be Provided, Possible Implementation of the Garbage Fee, and the Selection of a Contractor Proposal to Enter into Final Contract Negotiations With for the Provisions of Solid Waste and Recycling Collection Starting January 1st, 2023. I believe I'm turning it over to you now, Mr. City Administrator?
Yeah. So for 2022, the city has $607,000 in its budget for garbage and recycling, uh, collection. Um, and for our 2023 budget, we had, uh, 0.2%, just over 0.2% net new construction in the city, which provided us about $12,000 growth in our levy limit. So there's very little, uh, opportunity, um, to increase our, um, garbage and recycling costs significantly uh, without looking for some alternative source of funding, which would typically be- without looking for some alternative source of funding, which would typically be going to the garbage fee. So with that being said, I'm telling you that relative to the budget, if you want to keep garbage on the levy, you really got to stick to something in the area of $610,000 or less and that if we want to go higher than that, we'd be looking at something that would have to go onto a garbage fee. Does that make sense? Any questions about that? So with that being said, it really leaves you, if you want to stick with garbage being on the levy, you could go to automated and LRS Badgerland has some alternatives that would be within the range of what we could support on the levy for automated. Waste management would be within the range of what we could support on the levy for automated, but neither of them provide any alternatives for people to subscribe to some kind of up the drive type of service. One thing that, as I'm looking through the proposals, if you look at the John's proposal, they come in at $682,000, $683,000. And if we were willing to say, hey, residents, we're going to provide you an opportunity where you can subscribe to up the drive, but in order to do so, we'd have to take away the bulk collection being included in what the city pays and require the residents to pay for bulk collection. Again, that cost that John's would charge would be $95 per trip for bulk collection. It's not $95 per item, but $95 per visit, so you could put two or three bulk items out there for a visit. I don't have a good feel for how much our residents use bulk collection. I know in the city of Brookfield, I've been at my house for over 20 years and I think I count maybe three times I've put an item out for bulk collection. So it really comes down to, you know, do we want to pay $78,000 a year so that our residents can put bulk items out? Or does it make more sense to have them pay directly that $95 and then it gives us an opportunity where we can realize the savings of automated collection, but at the same time provide our residents that really need that up the drive feel, that they could do the full walk-up collection and pay the extra $240 a year and have that level of service? So those are my thoughts on, as I analyze the different proposals we receive, but obviously it's important to open up discussion amongst the council to talk about whether the cost savings of automated is something that we want to consider pursuing or do we absolutely positively need to provide some level of up the drive service? You know, seven years ago, when we were talking about automated versus up the drive, the cost savings was about $160,000 a year. Now it's grown to about $340,000 a year if you compare the lowest up the drive proposal to the LRS Badgerland proposal. So that's my thoughts on the subject and I'd look to open it up for discussion amongst the council.
Well, go ahead. Okay, I'll go first. Going back to the discussion we had, what, five years ago?
Seven.
Seven years ago. Wow, it seems. I could get a different hobby. I was shocked at the response we got from the survey and just feelers out in the community as far as how they really, really valued the up the drive service. Otherwise, I would be all over trying to use this as a budget win and doing every other week recycling and going with the lowest dollar at the curb pickup. But knowing that that's not the case, and I think that based on, you know, the referendum we put out two years ago as well, people are trying to maintain the level of service that they have and are willing to pay a little bit for it. And I think the only one that makes sense to me as far as, well, the one that jumps out as far as offering that flexibility and getting down to that budget number is John's. That's my summary of what I see on this and when it comes to bulk collection, if that's something that, I mean, there's a number associated with it and either everybody pays for the few people that use it or the people that use it now and then pay to have it done. I would say kill it, kill it out of that proposal and then they're competitive with the others.
I would agree with just about everything Alderman Iker said. You extend a benefit, it is very hard to take that benefit away from people and I know myself and everybody, most everybody in my neighborhood, they love the up the drive convenience. I would agree that bulk, the utilization of bulk is minimal. If, I don't see it in my district. So it appears at least John's has that flexibility on maintaining up the drive and some price leverage on that bulk item.
Is bulk now included in our contract that we have now? It is, yes.
But as you said, you don't have a feel for how many people are really using it.
I do not.
I've not used it once in 25 years that I've been here, so I'm tending to agree with Matt and with Tim.
In our current bulk, it's included for free except for free on appliances, there is a $25 fee currently.
Well, I would just agree with Tim and Matt also because though my wife is disabled, I'm not, but I have a 100-yard driveway, so when I'm not available taking out the garbage, you know, then we have to go through the murder mode, she's disabled, who can? And if we have the option, we just say, hey, we'll pay for the drive, up the drive service, I'll pay for it. I think, don't take it away from me, but if you give me the option, I'll pay for it.
At what point do we need to decide whether, like, whether this is going to remain in the levy or be a fee? Like, would we be discussing that now?
We could discuss it right now or we could ignore it, you know, at this time and we could talk about it again first, second quarter next year to put it on a fee for 2024. It's not something that there's an urgency to. Are you talking about looking at one of the higher proposals?
No, but I'm, no, I think John's is, I think that fits what we're looking for as far as our needs are, but I'm just curious in the budget world in general, because the, because this comes up often when we're having budget issues, it's just such an easy thing to cut from, or it seems like an easy thing to cut from, I should say, it seems like an easy thing to make cuts on, but in the reality, people like that service, so it's not as easy as it appears it would be. I feel like there might be some value in having that be a separate fee because then people can look at that independently from the regular budget. That's my thought behind it is why maybe having that be a fee because then it's not, every time we need, we're having budget issues, we're not looking at, could we cut the trash? That's.
Yeah, the other thing with regards to, first of all, let me say, we're one of the last municipalities to still have our garbage on the tax roll. And one of the reasons for that is you can gain significant levy limit by putting something on the, on a fee, whether it be garbage or fire. And the reason for that is right now, our garbage collection costs $607,000. The people that made the state levy limit laws said that if you convert a service that you're currently charging or currently funding by the levy and you're going to charge a fee for it, you have to reduce your levy limit by, you have to take a reduction in your levy limit, but the reduction, for whatever reason, is based on what it cost you in 2013. So right now, we're paying $607,000 and also it only is based on the cost of just garbage and you can exclude recycling with regards to the reduction. So our current budget supports $607,000 and we would only have to reduce our levy limit by 300-some thousand dollars. And so it would be, you know, a win of about $270,000 or $280,000 that then the city needs to make the decision of, do we remove that from people's taxes or do we want to use that levy capacity to fund firefighter, a public works position, things that we've wanted to fund in the past, but our levy limit hasn't allowed us to be able to do?
And if you don't use that capacity.
It's gone.
Lose it.
Yep.
Or the fact that we have a referendum for almost exactly that amount right now that would balance out the referendum, correct?
Yeah, but we're.
That was what I said.
We do have a budget meeting coming up, but like, you know, right now, in order to make ends meet, not only do we need that referendum amount, but remember, we're also using almost $200,000 a year in ARPA funds to make our budget work and.
Okay, but we're also talking about, I mean, fire and all those kind of things. So right now, I mean, anywhere that we have the ability to do that and it makes sense and that we can explain what we're doing to the residents in a way that they, that they would be on board with, I think is important for us to do that.
Yeah, but I think if the, if this, if the council wanted to go to like true up the drive, one of the 900-some thousand dollar proposals, we'd have to talk about the fee tonight.
No.
If we're going to do something in the 600-some thousand dollar range, we've got the budget process to talk about the fee or we could even defer it to be more of a 2024-type decision if we want more time to make that decision and understand what we want to do with the created levy capacity.
When does our current contract expire?
This year.
What I'm saying, Wayne, is we could, if we could make the decision on who we're going to hire and we could pay for it in the levy, through the levy in 2023 and then convert it to a fee in 2024.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
Good question.
I've never, you know, I know I've mentioned it before because this is, this is a topic that's near and dear to my, the hearts of my constituents and they, I think we want to be able to offer that option of up the drive. I personally don't care, I'm happy to wheel, slut my big bin out there and down to the road. It's just, but I know that a lot of people value that and I like the idea of the fee option, you know, so people recognize the values, but it's just something that I think if we pull that completely, ooh, I don't want, my phone will be ringing.
You'd be surprised. What we heard seven years ago, there were a lot of very upset people.
I was shocked, actually.
So I'll just say, I agree with what Tim and Matt and Wayne and Jackie and Danielle have said. I tried to split it off to a fee seven years ago, but I was in the minority at that time, but it appears I'm in the majority this time.
That's because the dollars are very different. And that's the thing I would, I would love to tell my constituents and explain it.
So Tom, what we're talking about here is putting the 610,000 in the levy and then charging a fee for the up the drive service.
No need for it, but my constituents do.
Well, yeah, the city wouldn't charge a fee for up the drive service, the contractor would. Yes, 240. For the extra 240.
I have no problem with individuals paying extra for extra services, right? That's kind of customizing the service to your needs. You can pay or you don't pay.
Given the cost reality that we have, I mean, we'd love to include it and the citizens benefit from us competitively bidding this, right? And treating it as a whole group, we're doing it this way, we're getting the best possible price for that type of service. We just can't afford to give it to them in their taxes as we have in the past because the costs have just gone up too much.
I think people would understand a fee, you know, for trash collection. I've had that in other municipalities and it's like, oh yeah, okay, kind of, no big surprise. Regarding the up the drive service, I'm exactly with Jackie, I don't give a darn, but my constituents do. They, they're all over that. District 2, a lot of people for various reasons that really want the up the drive service. I think they'll, they'll pay, if they have to pay extra for it or if it's included, I don't think it matters, whatever works, but as long as it's available to them.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the $240 up the drive service, what that really is, is you still have the 96 gallon carts, you can leave them by your garage, driver will come up, get the cart, take it down, dump it and bring it back up to you. So there are, I've heard from one person who really doesn't like the 96 gallon carts, wants to stick with the 32 gallon cans and the, and whatnot. And there's even an option in John's proposal for that, if you want to stick with the garbage cans and the bins, but the price is to be determined based on the number of people that would want that service.
That's a, that's a big cart downtown.
They offer, they offered the smaller version, if you recall, too.
Because it doesn't fit near, is that where they have garbage carts outside of the houses now, ugly, uglifying the city?
Well, Mark, you heard that option, you gave the example of the elderly couple and they said, we only produce one bag of garbage a week, we don't need those giant cans. They exchanged them for a smaller cart.
They really don't want to wheel that around. I have a 32 gallon cart now and the driver won't lift it to empty it because it's too big. So grandma's going to be wheeling out a 96 gallon cart now?
No, that's what I'm saying, they don't have to have the 96.
Yeah, you can pay for it.
Because I won't need that with two people in my house.
Because some people don't.
And those carts, the 96 gallon carts, those wheel pretty easily, those are big wheels.
They have wheels on them.
Well, we have snow and ice here.
That's why I said, big wheels.
I'm trying to measure where I'm going to put it.
Are we looking for, you're looking for?
No, just direction, correct, Tom?
No, we'd be looking for a motion here and if, you know, if you want to select a contractor and the level of service that we're looking for, and then with that motion, I would enter into finalizing a contract with that contractor.
Can you clarify, refresh my memory on John's recycling? Where, how do they handle recycling?
Once, once a week.
Once a week?
Yeah.
Along with the 96er?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
So if anyone wanted to make a motion, I think what I'm hearing is to go with John's for their roadside collection proposal, but without the optional bulk inclusion.
Also.
And the up the drive option.
But that's, yeah.
Subscription, subscription.
Yeah, I'll move.
What about, could, one more?
What's that?
One more discussion on an option before you move. The optional yard waste collection, they talked about they could do it twice a year. Does something like that make sense for us?
Yeah, I think that's something that we would have to.
I think the weekly is overkill.
I don't want, yeah, I'm not going to move to include that right now, that would be something that maybe we could discuss after.
Could we get a proposal on that? Because.
To be funded by a fee?
Well, they said they could give us a quote for.
Right.
Twice a year.
We don't have any more room in the capacity, in the levy.
And we aren't profiling that now either, right?
No.
In the current plan?
So currently, people buy their own bags and then they buy stickers from waste management. So there is a subscription service for bag pickup of yard waste. As long as it's an extra fee, I don't have any problem with it. If people want it, they can buy it, so.
I'd rather encourage mulching and, and, you know, I mean, all that stuff that grows, decomposes, that's what soil is. So I'd rather not, you know, create a whole bunch of collecting stuff that should, you know, I mean, I realize some people have huge yards and it's a problem, but some of us don't. And so I'd rather that remain like a fee and an option that people can look at. So as far as like right now, I wouldn't be keen to put that in the service.
Yeah, certainly it'd be something that we'd have to negotiate, quantify it and figure out how we're going to fund it.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Not even once a year?
Never, no.
So we don't have a motion yet, do we?
I, I'm moved, but.
We never got a second.
As soon as you have discussion, it's considered a second.
There you go.
Okay.
If you want to put my name down.
I'll second it.
I think Schaefer technically continued the discussion on that.
There you go.
So I had a first by Henry.
The motion was.
Second by Schaefer.
Oh, sure, we're going to get.
To select John's for roadside collection proposal with the optional bulk service, without the optional bulk service and with the optional up the drive subscription and to enter into final contract negotiation for the provision of solid waste and recycling collections during January 1st, 2023.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just comment, I'd like some of the, and I know it's going to be a learning process, but I'd like some of the negotiation be to kind of look out as far as what the subscription rate or attach fee, attach rate would be for some of these additional services so that we can look at, make sure people are getting a good ongoing value. Because we've got a price schedule for these optional services right now. I'd like to see one of, oh, if 10% of the people are going to do up the drive, what would that cost versus be versus if 70% of the people do up the drive? I'd like to see some sort of pricing schedule for that so we can.
For the true up the drive, and the only difference is that they can use the smaller cans and.
Well, no, I know, but you know what I mean? I mean, knowing upfront, because we have, I don't know if that's all in the proposal or not. Because if we get, so we've got how many, let's say it's 2,000. many, let's say it's 2,000 residents, and they've got some sort of attachment rate as far as how many customers are gonna be subscribing to that service in mind for their per, for their fee. If we get a really high attach rate as far as 80% of the people want this, if that, instead of 240, maybe it'd be 200. You know what I mean? For your, am I making myself clear? Like, I'd like to see a schedule as far as the volume, a volume discount for these additional services.
Are you, are you asking me to see if we can do better on the 240, if we get a certain number of people that, that use it? Or are you talking about the to be determined number for true up the drive service with the smaller cans, to get a schedule for that?
Well, I'd, I'd like clarity for both, yeah, yeah.
I'd agree with Tim.
Just, just so that we, because we're negotiating in behalf of all the individual people, otherwise they're all doing it on their own. And I don't, I don't know that we need, and it may be worthwhile to, to, to think about what options we might now wanna, in that, those discussions, what, where's their, where's their efficiencies of scale for John's based on what our customers may not want?
Maybe their assumption is 60%, where we'll deliver 95%.
But all those, all those things. I, I understand that any, anyways, you get my gist?
I do.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I was also gonna say, if, for all the add-ons, like any of the subscriptions that the residents could, just having that clearly defined as well, for any, for any of them, like if, whatever is available to the residents, that that's made available, that we know what that is.
Yep.
You mean, like something that would be mailed to every homeowner, explaining the fee?
No, no, just that, I mean, we could, something that we could post on our website, that it's like, this is what our, what, all of the available options to our residents, and what they are, what they are and what the costs are.
Yep.
Associated with those.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have to talk about it now, but we.
No, no, just when you're doing the.
No, I'm just saying, staff, we might want to talk about, at some point, doing some kind of postcard or something to let people know, you know.
They'll see the pins show up.
They'll throw it in the trash.
I said they never got it, but we'll know we did.
All right. What was the, so the, the small streets and the dead ends and the, what was their solution to that?
They said they too would use some pickup trucks for that.
They'd use smaller trucks for those areas, okay.
So, so if, on, on the street that you live on, if people push them to the end of their driveway, that's what's included, right? Correct?
Yep.
But if they want them to go down their driveways, then there's a fee.
They can pay for that and get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they can get it to the street, whatever the definition of the street is over by where you live, then they don't have to pay the extra fee, they, they won't have to pay the extra fee if they want down the drive service. Does that make, am I helping to clarify, or am I not?
Yeah, yeah. I'm just thinking of those elderly people and the, some of the 200-foot driveways and trying to.
It might be a deal.
Yeah, I think that'd be a very good.
Something will work, work for everybody, yeah.
Four bucks a week, that's a pretty good deal.
Yeah, because there's something that, it's a hot topic.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, we will move on to eight, consent agenda. Nothing on there, so we'll move down to nine, boards, committees, commission, and reports. Licenses.
We have the application in for contento, so this has been an ongoing process with the town of Delafield. We went through the process of approving negotiations for the purchase of the reserve license. We approved last council meeting, the agreement. Now that that's been approved, contento, I did all the publications for that. So this is issuing the license, I apologize, it's granting the license, which says that it's for them, pending them paying their fees. They have not paid the fees yet. I believe from my discussions with them that they're waiting for the official approval before they pay those fees.
Don't blame them.
Yeah, which then, you know, we unfortunately will not get to keep the fees for this round of the reserve license. They will be paid to the town of Delafield.
I'd move to grant the reserve license to contento, pending necessary fee payments.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Do we know when they're, when they're set to open?
I, I can't hear you, Danielle.
Oh, I just said, do we know when they're scheduled to open?
We don't.
Okay.
Soon. We've been told soon.
I've been asked.
But that's all we know.
A few times, I'm like, I have no idea. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, we'll go to nine B, planning commission. Mr. Iker.
Yeah, we haven't had a, a plan commission meeting since our last council meeting, but we do have action for the public hearing that was just executed today. This is for the land use plan, map amendment for changing it from, I believe it's institutional now to medium density residential. Initially, there was a, a proposal to make it high density. This pairs that down to medium. And although there's still concern about how that's going to look, all that art and design is gonna come with any kind of a development plan that comes in. So the specific implementation plan and all that is gonna be something that the plan commission's gonna, gonna negotiate through, and we'll see and get a chance to approve that as well in the future. But I'll make a motion to approve the land use plan map as was recommended by the plan commission unanimously.
I'll second.
Discussion?
So we're approving ordinance number 808?
That's correct. I am, you make it so easy and I make it so hard. So yes, the motion is for ordinance 808.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, hearing noted, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
And I'll just comment, the next, so we do have a meeting, I believe, next week, next Wednesday. And this discussion about the possible land use changes for the Highway 83 corridor, I'm not a fan of that term, but that's what's being kicked around, those are ongoing. And we did, we did suggest that our planner come up with a, an actual motion, I believe, or a, what do you call it, an, pardon?
Resolution.
Resolution, which is gonna, I, I believe it's gonna take a couple, I, I, it's, we'll have one, but we're gonna be discussing the, the ins and outs of that at our next plan commission meeting, and probably go on to future meetings. I don't, by some miracle, we get it all figured out in a week, we'll, we'll have a ref, some, a recommendation to the council, but I bet it takes a meeting or two. So just, and, and with that in mind, also, people need to remember that, that there is a difference between land use and zoning. So we, we just, everyone needs to be cognizant of that. We're gonna keep repeating it, but, but you can't do one without the other, so it is, is something to keep in mind. So I'll, that'll be something I report on as we go.
Great, thank you very much. All right, C, Lake Welfare Committee.
Okay, Lake Welfare met last Wednesday. One thing that we did set in, set in motion, we revisited the impervious surface amendment that we put in last October. At that point, we recommended to the plan commission that we wanted to have impervious surfaces not to be within 35 feet of, of the lake for everything except boathouses and piers. And we had also recommended at that time to be 50% of the entire lot be impervious surface. The plan commission, actually the person from our Lake Welfare Committee was concerned about small lots not having the 50%, it wouldn't have enough left for, for a house. Our committee was not concerned about the small lot, because that wasn't the issue, it was the big, big lots that were filling it with all sorts of stuff. So we revisited that, I met with Amy the week before the meeting, and what we did was take the original, the recommendations of a pure impervious surface to 50%, and then added to that to lots of 10,000 square feet and more. So that would allow a person to have a, a good-sized footprint, a driveway, you know, all the normal things you would have, but it would eliminate, you know, putting in tennis, tennis courts and concrete the whole backyard, some of the things that's happening in some areas of, of the city. So we passed that 7-0, and we were gonna send that to the plan commission to revisit that again in their January meeting. Let them get through the budget, and we'll do it in January.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, D, Park and Rec.
No meetings since our last council meeting.
Okey-dokey. E, Public Works, Mr. Grimmer.
Public Works had a meeting last week. We discussed the priority of the paths, path priorities, which you should see in our budget proposals as we move towards the budget. And I think that, I think that's it. Anything, yep, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for that report. F, Delahire Commission, Mr. Iker.
Yeah, the last news I left off was we were looking for a finance director and treasurer, and we had a special meeting tentatively scheduled for tomorrow to discuss options for recruiters if we didn't have a suitable number of applicants. And that meeting was canceled. I believe we have a good candidate that is, we're progressing through the hiring process with, so we may have a good replacement for Rose, so that's good news. Next meeting is second week of November.
In this labor market, that is great news. All right, G, Police Commission.
We haven't had a meeting. We have one scheduled for the 27th.
The 22nd?
Seventh.
Seventh. All right, thank you very much. Library Board, Ms. Henry.
Yeah, we met last Tuesday. There's a couple of things. There've been some turnover, so they're in the hiring process right now for a position. They've been doing targeted marketing as a new strategy for reaching citizens about their interests and sending out notifications and emails that are directed towards their interests, which has been really positively received. There've been over 200 signups just for that. And the community engagement's been really good. The newsletter, the newsletter open rate is over 55%, which is enormous compared to most nonprofits that are about 25%. So our community is really engaged with the library. It's really great to see. The health insurance budget came in less than was expected, so that's been good for the library's budget. And there is a board member vacancy now that I think is even on the agenda for tonight, but, so we'll be seeing someone there. We approved the holiday schedule for 2023, and the book sale at the fish hatchery is now the first and third Saturday of the month.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, zoning boards of appeal, I don't think anything, correct, Jackie?
Correct.
Okay, J, Promotion and Tourism Commission.
And no October meeting this month.
No meeting, okay. K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, not a meeting that I'm aware of. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We have a meeting on Thursday at 5:00 PM, Station One. CPI for the, the CPI budget, CPI came in at 9.7% versus the 7.5 that we budgeted, and health insurance was budgeted at 5.4%, instead came in at 2.4%. So we'll be discussing those adjustments to the budget. And also consideration of the Village of Economowalk Lake proposal, which allocates our capital spend to operations for the 2023 budget, and then utilizes some fund balance for that as a, a means to immediately fund the 2023 operations.
I'm sorry, did you say that meeting is this coming Thursday?
Yes, Thursday at 5:00.
At 5:00. Okay, great, thank you very much. M, other committees, commissions, and boards, we have deer management, Ms. Henry.
We've not met since last night.
But they're hunting deer out there, right?
They are, yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to 10, unfinished business. A, update regarding the city's opposition to the proposed monotube traffic signal installations on the WDOT South 83 resurfacing project currently scheduled for construction in 2025, but could be moved up to 2024. And the city's request for consideration of better, more suitable alternatives to be considered that would fit in better with the area aesthetics. Tom?
Yeah, if you might recall, the council discussed this back in 2020, and I think it was specifically Jackie and Tim that had some significant concerns about the monotubes. And I took those concerns back to W, to DOT in 2020, and they told me that they would look into alternative designs, and provided some pictures of alternatives that could be considered. Didn't hear back from them for a year, and I reached out again in 2021 and asked the same questions, and didn't hear from them again. And now, just recently, I heard from one of their design engineers asking about whether the city wants curb ramps installed at Oakwood and 83. I said, yes, we do. And I said, what, what's going on with those monotubes? And he said, oh, let me check. And I finally did get a response from DOT, and the response was, it's gonna be monotubes. There is no other alternative. They identified their rationale for it, and I can read that off here real quick. They talk about monotubes providing a factor of safety as far as being able to provide a signal head over each lane as compared to the older style trombone arms, which would be a safety improvement, especially in terms of signal visibility to the motoring public. Flashing yellow arrow signals are the standard, and we'll need monotubes to align them over the left turn lanes. And lastly, the crash reduction factors for monotubes with overhead signals per lane are 23% reduction in right angle crashes, and 3% reduction in rear-end crashes, and a 19% reduction in left turn crashes with the installation of the flashing yellow arrow signals. So they've made it quite clear that they will not give consideration to any other alternatives, and let us know. This leads into the next agenda item, that the only alternative that we have for an aesthetic improvement is, they come as a standard gray color, and if we want to pay an estimated $2,500 per intersection, times two intersections, that we could have them painted black. And they said, and some municipalities choose to do that as a aesthetic upgrade.
So are we moving to the next agenda item, or?
Well, that's my update, and I think, I think we would open it up to any discussion by the council, but I don't think we're getting anywhere with regards to pushing the issue. And then if there is no discussion or after discussion, then we can go to the issue of whether we want to pursue the paint upgrade.
Is this something we can decide after they're already up and say, oh, that looks awful, or that's not so bad?
I, I believe this would be factory painted.
You're not gonna get up there and.
No. The quality of the paint job in the field would not be near, near what it would be in the, in the factory.
I'm surprised that, that painting them black would make them look any better.
Yeah, I actually, I have no idea.
You know what we're talking about, right?
Well.
But.
I think it would, I, I, I'm not convinced that it's needed, but I think it does make it look a lot better when they are black like that, factory painted. But there's maintenance issues that go along with that. I, I find it $2,500 for an entire intersection actually seems kind of inexpensive to me, but I'm not convinced that it's needed, but I think there is an aesthetic difference. When you go down a community that has all black ones, it, it looks different.
It almost fits in with a lot of the accessories with the street, street tape that are usually like kind of a wrought iron type look and things like that, I think? Railings and stuff?
So is this, okay.
They're just ugly.
I'd say, I'd say if, if they don't, if they want to insist that they're ugly, I think we should try to do what we can to make them look better. I mean, we're gonna be living with them for, as long as there's, I don't know what the warranty is on the paint, but per intersection, what is it, three of them?
Two, two intersections.
Five grand to make them look a little better.
It'd be a capital budget item, right, for 2024, or 2023 or something?
Put it in the budget. We can pull it out if we think it's something we need to kill, but they, they are really ugly. I just.
My thought too is we could potentially ask Heartland if they would want a car, caution with us.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
There you go. I think, yeah, I agree with Jim.
Yeah.
Put it in the budget, and then if we need to pull it out of the capital budget.
We, we pay more for less impactful things that you don't see, that, bike racks and other stuff to make them look better, so, anyway.
I'll, I'll find out when they need. I'll, I'll find out when they need, um, a commitment from us by, but they're, they're looking to get, you know, finalize plans and specifications for the project is what they're doing. They typically bid the project out a year before construction, which could potentially be, you know, bidding it out next year. But, um, I'm sure it's a minor enough issue that they could figure out a way to, um, bid that as an alternative or something like that. But I'll work with them.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we're going on to B for a motion, or no?
No, I think I got the direction I need.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Then we are going to 10C, Discussion Regarding Lake Country Fire and Rescue Staffing and Funding, Including the 2023 Budget and Estimated Fire Fee Projections for Years 2024 Through 2026.
Yeah, at the last council meeting, the, the council asked, uh, for me to get together and work with the, uh, fire chief who is here tonight to, um, help with the discussion as needed, to identify what the costs would be, uh, if we were to go to a fire fee for 2024, 2025, 2026. Put together the memo, um, there's some important information in there. The fire chief wants to make sure that it's understood that these are estimates, best, you know, best scenario estimates at this point, that the fire board still has not reviewed. And if you look at it, there's, we kind of came up with two approaches for how to pay for it, and certainly those approaches can be tweaked, uh, and refined. But we looked at a straight rooftop approach, um, where we're looking at, um, uh, what would be a 2024 fee of $671, 2025 fee of $829, and a 2026 fee of $926. And then we also looked at an approach that, um, uh, allocated more of the cost to the commercial properties to indicate that, um, you know, there can be more costs involved with fighting a fire for larger buildings and whatnot, and more of a risk of fires in, in some commercial buildings. And so by doing a, allocating 65% of the cost to the residential, uh, tax base and 35% of the commercial tax base, um, what that resulted in was, um, and you'll see in the memo, for 2024, a commercial fee of $1,917, a residential fee of just shy of $500. Uh, for 2025, the fees are $2370 and $614, and for 2026, it's $2648 and $686. So there's some substantial fees, especially considering, uh, what we're paying now. Uh, actually, in this chart in my memo, there is one mistake, and that is the 2022, what the fee would be if we were supporting our current budget with a fee. That, that's actually, it should be 364 instead of 399. And, um, you know, as far as total dollars, what we're looking at is, um, current budget of about a million and $40,000. And in four years, that would rise, um, up to about $2.65 million. There is a significant need, uh, the chief went over that with you. Uh, there are, um, there is a significant problem right now with brownouts in the City of Delafield Station. It is affecting our response times, and, um, you know, combined with police, it's certainly the most important, uh, service that we provide to our residents. So it's an important topic, and, um, uh, so this is the information that you asked for. And as we move forward, we're on a tight schedule as far as if we want to go to a referendum. That referendum, in order to be on the April ballot, we'd have to approve final ballot language on January 16th, uh, and the issue should be, um, introduced at both meetings in, in December at a minimum. But as we go through, we, we need to talk about things like, do we want to go to referendum for fire funding, or is the council at all comfortable with making the decision based on the importance of the service to go forward without a referendum? Uh, if we go to referendum, do we know that we want to do a fire fee? Or will we be looking more for a levy limit increase? As we talked about with, um, the garbage, uh, if we go to a fee, it creates, um, some unused levy capacity that we could use for other things, or we could choose not to tax residents for it, or we could do a combination of both and kind of, uh, tax for some of it and give some tax relief with some of it. Uh, and then lastly, what the chief has mentioned, that, um, uh, I think the LCFR staff is supporting kind of a unified fire fee that would be consistent amongst most all municipalities. That's not what you're seeing here. This would be just the city paying for its costs. And under a unified fee, um, it would result in more equitable allocation of costs and a reduction of costs allocated to city residents. The reason for that is under the current LCFR agreement, um, it started with kind of a base, um, fee that each community is responsible for, and that's based on what their budget was coming into, um, the agreement. So, uh, it wasn't completely, uh, allocated based on the formula, but that base fee was based more on what each community could afford to pay, and then, and then a portion gets run through the formula on an equitable basis. Any questions on that?
So just for everybody's benefit, can you, the, the numbers that you have here, just for simple calculations, the rooftop ones, and I think it's the same questions I asked last meeting, but I just make sure I, I have it right. So in 2022, the citizens were currently paying in this year's budget $364 already?
Correct.
And so in 2023, there'd be, the increase would be the difference between 532 and 364? Or we add 532 to the 364?
No, they'd pay 532, so the increase would be the difference.
The difference. And then to that, and then when you go to the 670, um, is it only the difference, again?
Each of those numbers is what they would pay in that year.
In that year, okay.
Total.
Total, yep.
Okay.
That's, and that's taking the city's total operating budget for LCFR and putting it into that fee.
Yep. So then at the end, 2026, if you minus out 364, that's the difference over the whole time?
Correct.
So it's a net increase of 364?
What?
It'd be a net increase of 364 over the current year?
542. 926.
What do you ask for an increase from?
What the, what the, the net increase is, what we're currently paying already in the budget, and then we're bumping it up for a fee, just want to be kind of clear.
For the, for the ultimate fee in 2026?
Yeah.
The difference would be?
542?
562?
Yeah, we're currently paying 364.
Yep.
With no increase?
We're currently paying 364.
That's today.
And that fee would climb to 926.
926, okay.
Difference of 562.
Per year.
So no matter how you slice it, we're talking about increasing the funding by 154% over four years.
So if we go to a referendum in, in April, what happens to the start of this year? Everything gets put off until the next year?
So the council's going to have two choices in your budget. No matter what, we're, we're going to be funding LCFR, um, CPI plus 2%, which is a 9.7% increase for them. It's going to be in the budget, um, in the traditional manner that it's always been, meaning that if you approve it, um, the way it's in the budget, that, um, about $1.1 million will go to them for use in operating, and about $200,000 would go to them for use in capital. The alternative would be, if you want to approve the Village of Economowoc Lake plan, you would be giving them permission to spend that $200,000 that's intended for capital on 2023 operating and supporting the use of about $400,000 of their own fund balance. But right now, um, there's no definition on how that capital budget or that fund balance would be replenished. And actually, of that $400,000 fund balance, about $200,000 of it belongs to the City of Delafield.
So there's a disproportionate contribution by the city. But that would have to be?
Matt, I, I think they'd be using the $400,000 in the name of all the communities, but knowing that they would have to pay back Delafield, Shneekwun, Nishoda in the future.
Correct.
If, if we would seek a unified fire fee or some way that, it just seems, we're paying 41% of the total for the seven communities, roughly. That's a lot.
Yeah, that's what, what happened when, when communities were interested in coming into LCFR, they came to us and said, this is what our budget is, and that's what we can afford to come in at. Take us or leave us. And even though they weren't paying a proportional share compared to what Delafield or Shneekwun and Nishoda were, it was still advantageous slightly from an operational perspective and significantly from a capital perspective. When you look at the ladder truck that we just purchased for $1.1 million, under LCFR III, the City of Delafield would have been responsible for 78% of that $1.1 million. Now we're responsible for 40-some percent of it.
And any other capital purchase, same ratio?
Doesn't seem like they're paying, they're still not paying their fair share.
They're not, and, and if, I, I think everybody would acknowledge that. But that was, that was the understanding coming into it, but this is really a game changer. And, so, and, you know, some of those communities that are paying disproportionately less are the ones pushing the hardest for, we've got to do this and, and, and we need to move forward. And so perhaps they would be motivated to, um, renegotiate something and, and look at it, a unified fee over all communities. And a unified fee over all communities would make a lot of sense. It would simplify things, uh, rather than, you know, different homes in different communities paying different fire fee amounts.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm still a little bit shell shocked as far as how, why we're at exactly where we're at, okay? But I'd be interested in knowing, so I can help explain this to, to people. Is, uh, understanding it's staffing, primarily staff, right? That we're, is the issue? How, coming into 2022, you know, what our staffing levels were and what to a person those employees cost? Which ones we lost and why, and who we plan on replacing them with and how much that is? Like, so just a simple table of the number of employees at each station, you know, or on, on total staff, you know, 2019, 2021, and then why they're not there anymore and who, you know, how many we need to replace them with. Is it body for body? So, I mean, just a table would be helpful for that.
Sure, Tim, sorry, I was just walking up as you were. So can you just rephrase what you're looking for exactly?
Yeah, like how, how we were, um, how we were positioned to, because this is a, this is a situation that's been presented to us starting midsummer of this year.
Absolutely.
So coming in, this time last year, how, how were we positioned in LCFR with staffing? You know, the, the number of people at each, at each level and from each source, part-time interns, volunteer, whatever. And then how that table of people from like, let's say, 2019, 2020, 2021, were doing the job, and who we lost and who we need for next year? Because that's, that's where my, it seems like, it's, almost seems like we don't have anybody on staff anymore. We have to hire, we're, it's like we're, our costs are tripling and then, or going up, whatever, 154% over the next, uh, few years. Some of that's inflation and stuff, but, um, just a staffing table of where we were the last year's running and where we're at now, so I can help explain.
Yeah, I'm certainly happy to provide that. It is a part of the staffing plan that we did on the September 12th meeting. Um, and the very simple answer to that is, is that currently, and when we came into the 2021 consolidation, the daily staffing for the organization was 12 people on duty 24/7, 365. That 12 people on duty 24/7, 365 consisted of six that were full-time capacity, so half of that, uh, 12 was in the full-time variety, and the other half was part-time, uh, and intern-type positions. And really where we're in jeopardy is the part-time and intern positions. Has, everyone is experiencing problems with the part-time labor market. It is affecting us tremendously. So we've, I guess, for 50 years revol, or, you know, relied on alcohol-free and low-cost labor to meet the daily needs of the citizens of all of the communities. And that is what is collapsing in front of our very eyes. There's been two paradigm shifts in hiring practices, um, of a larger and career organizations, so the, you know, Milwaukee suburb-type organization, City of Waukesha, where forever they would use and only hire firefighter paramedics to come into their organization. And in January of this year, the first agency changed because of the retirements that they're seeing, and they dropped their minimum requirement to firefighter EMT. So now, uh, the people that we would get and retain for three to five years to fill those part-time duties, um, are now going, excuse me, and working at a City of Waukesha, where we can pay them, you know, $16, $18 an hour, and they're making, you know, $60,000 a year, start topping out around $90, um, plus benefits and retirement and everything like that. So it's really no wonder where they're going. Um, the, the other shift that's happened recently has been the, as far out as Madison, which is probably one of the premier fire departments in the state. Um, they've actually dropped their hiring requirements down to high school diploma and driver's license. They will teach you EMT and they will teach you firefighter. Um, so that means they're going to capture people before we would even see them, um, come into the field. So it's, uh, it's really, those are the paradigm shifts that have really made it where it is today. Um, I, in the, the email I sent to Administrator Haffner today, uh, we know of approximately 50 hires that are going to happen in the metro Milwaukee area next year of open positions. Uh, Western Lakes being 22 of them. Um, New Berlin, uh, received a safer grant for nine hires. Uh, there's six can happen in the City of Waukesha, and that's on, you know, we're barely even to the Milwaukee-Waukesha County line yet. So we anticipate that over 50 hires will happen next year, full-time new ti, new hires, uh, which is going to significantly erode at the 19 active, part-time and paid-on-call people that we have, of which 17 of those are career seekers, where they're doing this to get that full-time job and to, to land their dream job. So, um, it's unfortunate, we don't see this getting any better anytime soon. I wish I could sit here in front of you and say that we see the light, but it, it just isn't there. Um, we've had a number of, you know, long-response time-type incidents lately, which has really brought it to the forefront. Um, and the board gets briefed on them every month. But, you know, for instance, uh, about two and a half weeks ago, we had a car accident where it took us 26 minutes to get an extrication engine on scene of a rollover car. That's far too long. We, we can't keep doing that kind of thing. It's, it's putting everyone at risk, so. Very tough conversations to have, um, but we need to, everyone to know about it.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I, I understand that. Is there, I'm, I'm assuming it's, it's something that can be pulled, I, I mean, I'd like to see that flow chart of the, the staffing levels, like what their, you know, what the salary was and, you know, how that's moving forward and how, were the, were that erosion's taking place?
It's in that presentation, that, from the September 12th, it's, it's in there.
There was a table with all of it in there. Pull it back up.
I don't think you were there, though.
I saw the presentation.
This one?
It's just an org chart, right?
No, I mean, I was talking about like the actual, I didn't, was there a salary total and like paid per position and like number at each level, or no? Cause we were, are, are, is this, is this, we're going to 100% full-time, is that?
Correct. Over the course of four years, the plan calls, uh, to transition over to 100% full-time. There will always be a place for part-time and paid-on-call individuals that want to serve the communities and do it in that capacity. However, they'll be used to fill in vacation days, to do special projects, to do, um, things like that and, and help us with our surge capacity. Uh, but I think the days of relying on them to meet the mission on a daily basis will sunset in the very near future.
Matt, isn't it reasonable to expect that in the ultimate build-out that there still would be a place for, you know, you get these high school kids coming? would be a place for, you know, you get these high school kids coming into the training center and that perhaps once they get certified that they could, they could fill, they could literally fill a position, not just vacation, but fill one of the spots for a year or two until they get their career job? And when they leave, a new, a new high school kid that gets his certification comes up and fills in?
I think that's a reasonable and a great goal to have, however, the, what we're seeing in the current market, it's just not existing. So we have those intern positions now, and we've had, we've ran four processes over the course of the year to fill the vacant positions that we have, and we've received zero applicants for them. So, you know, I don't have the crystal ball to look at what it would be four years from now, but I can tell you the past history that we've had. It was a very successful program from the launch of it, because it provides those high school individuals with free college tuition and everything.
Yeah.
But it, it just, it hasn't, and, and all the programs around here that are utilizing it are experiencing the same type of thing, so.
And maybe that'll be cyclical, and if, if so, you guys would, would retain spots for the cheaper labor, a couple spots and?
But let's certainly hope so. And I mean, it's something we can report back to the board and, and keep continuously status monitoring it, but it's, at this point, it's not something that I think we need to, we can base our daily staffing on, unfortunately, as much as I would like to say, absolutely.
So my, the simpler version of my question is, or just the request for information is, the six part, the six positions that we're filling, you said there's six that, that were full-time and that's six a combination of part-time intern?
Mm-hmm.
Coming into this, into the merger? What's the, so like for, let's say, for two thousand twenty-two, or if those six positions for part-time and intern were totally filled, what's the, what are we paying them? That's like, what is that number in the budget? Like running up from, do you know what that was or no?
Kevin Keith taught me a long time ago not to do math.
Yeah, yeah, right. No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm, that's a number I'm curious about.
I can certainly get that for you.
Just, you know, what, how good a deal those people were that we're not getting anymore is really what I'm trying to extract.
A hundred percent. I mean, put it to you this way, we would fill three positions twenty-four seven. And, and I think it's probably, as, as you're talking through it, when we talk daily positions, you need to multiply that number by three because we have shift, you know, one that works twenty-four hours, shift two that works twenty-four hours, shift, so it's, it's really, you know, multiplied out by three. But when you take those numbers and you multiply twenty-four hours times, you know, eighteen dollars an hour times three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it's far, it's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand per day, and that's where we're at, is, you know, to fill a position is a hundred and twenty-six thousand per position, hundred twenty-four seven oh six, I'm sorry.
Right. No, I get it.
That makes sense, Matt.
Yeah, no, I did, I did the six times three, eighteen, you know, times a hundred grand a year is one point eight million dollars. And the ask is for more than that, that's if they're all, the ask is for more than that and we're not getting any credit for the six people that we're replacing. That's, I'm just not doing, I don't see the, I'm just trying to balance the numbers in my head, so.
Yeah, and we can provide that complete financial analysis for you.
And Matt, there's a small amount included in the ask besides staffing, right?
Yes, there's a couple of projects that were identified by staff as we've gone through the, this whole process, as we try to prepare a, I'll call it a four or five-year budget. Some of those, one of those is an additional staff person to, for mechanic position. Our fleet is aging, as we all know. Capital is becoming harder and harder to replace. It's becoming more and more costly to replace, and as we're experiencing problems finding people, so are the service companies that we rely on. So to have a person on site to keep that fleet on, in service, I think our fleet is assessed at like six point three million, so to have that person there. The other thing that we've discussed is an HR person, but again, that, that needs board action to further kind of vet that whole plan out. There are a couple other projects in there in terms of a software enhancement, things that we haven't been able to do for the past five years, ten years, because we've been bound by everything. So if we're presenting a, a plan that needs to get us into the five years, things that we're trying to identify and, and provide a, a safe and reasonable plan in.
More, more information is, is good. The, you know, I saw an exchange that was shared with the council as far as the memo and the question-answer. You, you referenced the city of Puywaki, and I mean, I pulled up their budgets, I think it's two thousand nineteen, up to two thousand twenty-three, whatever. They had a five-year plan and they showed two thousand nineteen numbers, and their call volumes are almost this, exactly, it's eerily similar to
Correct.
what you're dealing with. And so seeing those comparisons and what budgets are will help. So, I mean, the more of those we can get to translate geographic size, types of calls, types of call volume, response times, what it actually costs for everybody else. I mean, we could possibly establish that we've had the best deal running for the longest time and we just need, we're just, it's time to catch up. So, but all that data helps and knowing that we have to explain this via referendum or how we're going to approach it.
Absolutely.
More information's better.
Absolutely. I mean, really, and, and it said in the email, but for the public that's watching at home, I mean, kudos to this common council for having the leadership to go back, you know, fifteen years ago and start really thinking about doing this and, and what you have put together, because you do have the best deal running for these citizens and the best service out there. It's unfortunate we're in the situation we're in right now, but we will be delivering that again at some point, so.
Hey, Matt, this is obviously a problem affecting all cities around here.
Correct.
How are the larger cities like Tulsa and West Dallas and these people, how are they handling it? Their, their problem must be just as severe as ours.
Well, no, they're probably
Or were they always full-time previously?
Correct. They made the transition to full-time, to be a full-time agency in the sixties and seventies. So because they don't need to add people, because they're not relying on the, the job market that's evaporating, they're, they're far better off than we are. Their problem and why they're lowering their standards probably isn't the correct word, but why they've reduced their hiring requirements is that they have, they're seeing an increase in retirements with less people coming in, in the door to fill those positions, less qualified candidates. So really, I mean, we're, we want to be, position ourselves to be one of the first groups to hire instead of the last groups to hire, because we want to get the best candidates that we have for these citizens and for our communities, so. Yeah, the, the answer to your question, Paul, is that the city of Waukesha is in the larger agencies they've been career, the Racine Agencies have been career east of Caledonia for going on well over twenty, twenty-five years, so.
You know, which might be an interesting thing to help us show this to our people, is maybe a chart of what the, not the per diem, but the, the per-person cost for Tulsa and all these larger cities and where, where we were. Now, we're just actually going up to where everybody else has been paying anyways. Is that's correct?
Yep.
So being able to show that would really help us explain that to our people here.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
The part-time and interns obviously don't have the certifications that your full-time people have, right? I mean, they're not as qualified currently.
Some of them have, our, some of our part-time people have the firefighter paramedic certifications. Very few of them do at this point, and those are the ones that are their career seekers and they're, they're looking to gain the position somewhere else.
Okay, so my question is, do you need to, do you need to replace, like, could you lower the qualifications for certain positions so that you're not hiring, so not all of your staff is, has such a high standard?
Sure. The answer to that question is, on the full-time side, and just the way that the union contract is negotiated, we don't pay anymore, they don't get a stipend to be a paramedic. So they're basically getting paid the same as a City of Waukesha firefighter EMT. It's just our minimum requirement to come to the job, so we are giving you that bang for the buck already kind of thing. If that makes sense.
So there's no cost saving?
Not, not to lower the standard and to hire firefighter EMTs, no. And even at that, the, the paramedic stipend that they get at larger agencies is like fifteen hundred dollars a year, so.
But could that be something that you structured into where there's, you have so many positions that do get a statement and then could fill more positions with, with people that are not, do not have the paramedic?
I think, maybe I didn't answer that correctly the first time.
Okay.
Right now, we're paying firefighter paramedics what firefighter EMT makes at large, EMTs make at a larger organization. So you're already getting that bang for the buck that you're asking for?
Right, no, I, what I'm talking about is, I guess I don't understand, because you're, I don't know how to say it.
Unless I'm not hearing her correctly, so.
No, I guess I don't know how, I don't know how to say it the right way, so I'm just, yeah, I don't know how to explain it, so I'll let that go for now.
Sounds good.
Sorry.
No, give me a call tomorrow or something.
Okay, when I figure out how to phrase it, I'll, I'll send you.
Happy to do it.
Matt, is there any reason that we aren't using a fee today for this?
Mark, I, I can't hear you. You gotta bring that mic up.
Today, we're not on a, on a fee. We don't have a, we don't see this three hundred and sixty-six dollar fee. Is there some reason that?
A fire fee's never been discussed in the cities until, I'd say, July of this year.
I'm sorry, the?
It's never been a point of discussion until July of this year, putting fire on a fee.
Okay.
And if you're asking me why, the levy's been adequate to support it in the past, so.
We have, yeah, I think we have a system that worked very well and now it doesn't. And we, you know, we went along with it and maybe we should have looked down the road, but it, people are, are able to get full-time, you know, with benefits jobs for having not the qualifications that we want, and why wouldn't they go for those jobs? So when you post, you said four times for positions and you get exactly zero applications, we, we need to, you know, face the music that the system that was working no longer does, the way I understand it. I guess my only question is, if we're part of this group, why aren't we all paying similar amounts? Why are we?
The thought was because Dela the City had a higher utilization.
Gotcha, okay.
Based on call volume, higher population.
Okay.
Equalized value, that we are, our fair share should be reflective of that.
Proportional.
Yeah, that's how the funding formula worked on.
That's not exactly true. That's, that's
That's the funding formula. How is the funding formula not true?
That's the formula component, but, but this, this IMA includes a fixed amount of base amount.
Well, yes, no, I'm referring to IMA three.
Okay.
This budget, yes, we worked very hard to get a fixed rate because of the concerns that you raised.
Okay.
But we still pay more based on that formula.
The fixed rate does not favor Delafield. The fixed rate favors the communities that said, this is all we budget for fire, we'd like to still come in, we can't pay anymore, and they were still of value to us even though they weren't paying as an equitable amount compared to what we were paying. Matt, do I, am I saying that right?
Yes, I mean, the, the fixed component of it, I think, it was a, I thought it was a win-win when we developed it, Tom, was because it provides the stability.
Yep.
Because as you remember, when we were call volume-based, it was a fifty percent based on call volume, and the city put in, you know, there was a skilled nursing facility built in the city which took the call volume and went up by a substantial amount, which started to provide some instability to it. So the fixed portion of the budget really was designed to provide that stability for it. I think, Tom, what you're trying to get at is that the Lake Country and the city of Delafield dating back to the year two thousand has slowly started to invest in, in full-time people and slowly started to get theirselves out of it. And the formula, because of the way it was built, was built to take what everyone was paying at that time into consideration, is probably the fair standard that you're, that we were trying to reach.
Yeah.
Is it true that, I mean, no matter what we decide to do, it's gonna, we're not, it'll, it'll matter what the other communities decide to do as well, right? We're not, I mean, if we
Absolutely.
Okay. Like if we agree to all of it and the other communities agree to half of it, we're not going to be on the hook for all of that, right?
No, we'd be only, we'd only be responsible for our fair, our fair share.
For proportion, okay.
Which is more than
And we agreed to.
Yeah. We're only responsible for our share per the agreement.
Okay.
Matt, how comfortable do you feel in driving down the fund balance for a short-term solution? But?
I'm more comfortable with that than continuing to brown out fire stations and having twenty-six-minute response times to car accidents.
Good answer.
We, we can't continue to do that. We had a pulseless, non-breathing patient over the weekend that we had to call mutual aid for. We, we can't keep doing this.
When I, when I, and I know I said this at the last meeting, when I sent out your presentation to my constituents who are on my email group, every person, every single person was supportive of, of some sort of fee. They, they were appalled at the idea of brownouts, and not in a bad way, but like, no, we, we need to have this service, so. Yeah, I think, I don't think, I don't see it as an option. It's not like, yeah, let's, let's not have firefighters, you know, because that's where we're heading.
Then the fee, I like, in general, the principle of the fee because of the transparency of it. The reason I'm asking why we don't use that today is, I'm just kind of looking at the surface, okay, I like the idea of a fee, but is there somewhere other reason that's not, is there disadvantage to that, impact to the, something else that I'm not seeing? That's, that's why I'm asking, Tom.
No, there's no disadvantage, and as I said with the garbage, there's a potential advantage where it is a strategy that municipalities have used to be able to fund things that they want to fund for local services and whatnot, even if the levy limit does not allow for it.
I would say there, there used to be, I don't think it's a disadvantage right now, but if you're not putting something on the levy, it's not deductible on an individual's taxes. That's not as critical now because of SALT, the state and local tax limits where you're, you're capped, but not everybody's capped, and so you can't deduct that fee from your taxes.
We also talked about that if it's in the levy, then it's proportionate to how you're paying, how, what each individual property pays is proportionate to the levy versus the fee, which is not.
Versus the rooftop fee.
Yeah, that it's, you're going to end up
A fee's regressive.
Yeah.
So difference between budget, this is more philosophical as far as, than garbage, because your house is going to get picked up once a week. How often do you need the fire department? And should you pay for that fire department based on how much your home is worth or how many rooftops you have or how many residents you have? You know what I mean?
Or how many calls you get.
It's way different, our situation, I mean, so we need to vet the different funding vehicles to figure out what's going to be equitable, and it's a tough discussion.
Yeah.
Because like I said, the, the close example I can come up with is how we assess the roundabout and the traffic improvements over by Century Albrecht. It took us, it took us a couple of months, and we're being told we got to try to come up with some magic formula by Jan, middle of January, so we have to start working, and it starts with the budget, right? I mean, these numbers are real helpful to understand what the per-house, per-citizen impact is, how we want to divide it out.
Yeah.
We're going to have a discussion, we're going to have a decision to make at the budget time, and, and this is the beginning of it, so.
Yeah, the exact reason I argued for the garbage fee is like, when you have a fee, it seems, it, it gives the appearance of discretionary, like if there's an issue with it, it, it makes it very clear what you can argue against. When we're talking about the fire, I don't believe that that's a discretionary fund. I mean, that, that's not a discretionary expense, like we, we need that. What, what it comes out to is, is different, but we can't just decide not to have fire or, or to, you know, I mean, like, that's what I mean, it's, it's really different. And so for the exact opposite reason that I argued for the garbage to be on a fee, I would argue against having fire on a fee.
If you don't have garbage collection, I bet you get more complaints.
Right, but you could have, but, but there's options as far as what kind of service, and it's purely just preference. When you're talking about fire, when we're talking about twenty-six, you have people that aren't using it at all that are like, we don't need it. I had a call from somebody who said, we don't need fire, and I'm like, are you kidding? Like, really? Like, really, like legit? And I, I don't agree with that, because I think that when you need it, you want it to be there, so it's, it, it's
They don't need it until they do.
It's an illusion of discretionary, it's not really discretionary.
It's not.
So, that's my, yeah.
And Matt, what you're asking to do is, for two thousand twenty-three, use your fund balance and the extra nine, nine percent, and then two thousand twenty-four, we go to go to a referendum and add to the levy? Is that what I, is correct?
Essentially, yeah. The two thousand twenty-three is the stopgap, so we can discontinue the brownouts and keep the station open and start working on those response times while we spend a lot and start working on those response times while we spend a lot of time figuring out the best way to do 2024 and beyond. And whatever routes those be, whether it be a fee, or whether it be on the tax base, or whatever. And ultimately, the way the current formula exists, each community can do it however they see fit. I know five of the communities are not gonna go to referendum. They're exploring the fee option, and that's, that's the route that they're choosing to go down. The town of Delafield and the city of Delafield are discussing the referendum. I would ask that you converse with your counterparts west of here and discuss some of those pitfalls of the referendum and things of that nature, so. Because they can tell them to you.
The pitfalls of the Western Lakes referendum were that it failed, and then they passed along the charge regardless. And so they're faced with the will of the people saying, no, we don't want this increase. And them saying, okay, too bad, so said, we're giving it to you anyway in a different form. I'm a supporter of the referendum, and I'm happy to live with the consequences. And I wouldn't do a roundabout to say, okay, I'm gonna pass a fee, even though the voters voted this down. And I'm comfortable with that, because I, like I've always said, I have great faith in, in our electorate, in the city. My only question is, I guess, to Tom and whomever, if we were to go to a referendum, would it be more, if, if the state legislature acts in 2023 to provide support, which I think they will, based on what I've heard from public statements, from public individuals, would it be better to have, to put, to ask for a levy increase? Or would it be better to put it in a fee? If you're getting support from the state? I know that depends on what kind of support you're getting from the state, but.
The support from the state would reduce, reduce the ask either way. If also we get support from the state, we could reduce the fees lower than what we're showing here. Or we could reduce the, you know, if the, if the electorate, if the people approve, you know, a $1.6 million increase to the levy, and then the state comes along and says, we're gonna give you $200,000 a year, then we'd only use 1.4 of the 1.6 that the people approved, right?
Okay, but once you levy at 1.6, you've got flexibility in that levy?
Once you levy at 1.6.
Yeah.
Once you levy at 1.6, then.
If we, yeah, if that's the language we put, are we obligated to levy at 1.6? Even though the state comes in and says, here's an extra $200,000?
We're not, and that happened with our current referendum. We're, you know, we're approved at 257, and in the first year, we only used 190.
So then, so then a fire fee or a levy increase is?
From that perspective, I, I think I'm understanding doesn't make a difference.
Doesn't make a difference. Where would it make a difference?
Me personally, I, I'm thinking people may likely be more willing to approve a few hundred dollars a year versus 1.6 million dollar increase.
And it might be more logical to do the, the bigger, you know, levy, but I think you're right. The math is easier to swallow when the numbers are so big, I, yeah.
It's like insurance, like, am I willing to pay 360 bucks or 500 bucks for this peace of mind? 724-365? Well, sure.
That's exactly how people responded.
Why not? Yeah, that's, that's a no-brainer. I think the, it looks like a good value.
But, you know.
And they understand the numbers. They'll understand those numbers better.
I do the math. I always do the math. I trust, my neighbors are gonna do the math. You know, eight leather seats are only an extra 60 bucks a month. It's like, well, that's, that's 11 grand. I mean, people do the math, so it's like, we don't have to spoon feed them. Just, the number's the number. It's, it's 1.6 million bucks over four years.
And you saw that on Western Lakes, they advertised, they spent 100 grand on marketing, saying, hey, this is an extra cup of coffee, or what, what was it?
Don't do that.
Don't do that. What does 1.6 million dollars mean to me? I don't know what my share of that is when you present it that way.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know that there's, how many rooftops are.
That would be part of our, as we're, I mean, we did that with the last referendum. We broke it down and explained, what would that be for you? And we would do the same thing. I mean, it would break it down, and this is what it's going to look like per person, or per, I mean, it.
It's a horse apiece.
Yeah, I mean.
That's a, that's part of our budget discussion, right? I mean, we're digesting the numbers that we have to face.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the.
Do we need a vehicle right now?
This is a separate path compared to our 2023 budget, because we're talking about 2024. We've got a short timeframe. And I talk about January 16th, but really, you know, with the holidays and whatnot in there, we better have that question pretty well nailed down, you know, mid to late December. So, you know, as far as the path, I think the council needs to make a decision on whether we want to try to fund the proposed staffing plan. And if so, do we want to do that through a referendum? And if so, do we want to do it through a fee or a tax levy increase? And what information do you need that you don't have to get there?
Something this big, I think we've gotta go to referendum. If we're, you know, I'm, I'm used to fiery discussions over a 5 or 10% budget increase. It's a 150% increase. If, if we did this behind, you know, if we did this and didn't go to referendum, I'd be sitting there yelling at us.
The thing, though, that you have to also realize, and I think that's why these other cities who had the referendum and failed, and then they passed it anyways, is I think you have a legal obligation as a city to provide safety services to the, to the public. If we don't do this, we're not providing the safety services that we were elected to provide. Unlike most of our referendums, you know, you go to public library, stuff like that. There are voluntary things that you didn't really have to do, but we have to provide police and fire protection. So you're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't.
You're still providing them. You're just not providing them up to the city's, the residents' expectations. You've got an 11 or 12.
Or they'll tell you what you're doing is okay.
Right.
Right. That's a decision.
It's a 12-minute response time versus an eight-minute response time.
That's their choice.
And it may be growing.
Unless, unless the other one's making the call, I, I don't think, um, if it were someone that I cared about, that it would be no big deal to make it 50% longer, you know?
And it becomes more complicated, too, when we're not in this by ourselves, and we're in it, we've got, you know, basically teammates and with regards to municipalities that we're in this with, and some of them are more affected by the brownouts than, than others, and.
Do we know what their plans are as far as, I mean, are they, are the other communities looking at, you know, four, five years out as well? Or are they looking at it like we're fixing it now? I mean, are, are we consistent with how they're approaching it?
I think they all know the number. They're all coming up with their own ways to get there.
Right, but if we. If we approve it on a four-year increase, and they approve it, oh, we're doing it 100%. I mean, it goes to, all right, we've only approved a quarter of it. So is that where we're at, or would we increase it over the four years? Because that's what we, I mean, that's what I just, if we're approving a plan that's completely different than somebody else's plan, how do we decide over four years or however many? How does that work out that, how does it get implemented?
One way or another, you don't want to be going referendum every single year.
No, 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 I'm not saying that, but I'm, I'm just saying if we, okay, so let's say we agree to this for, on here, this, this fee, where we're, okay, we're gonna go with the next, the rooftop approach. Next year, we're approving 532, and the year after that, we're approving, you know, we're approving this increase over the next four years. Okay, next year, we're only approving 532 per rooftop. If, if somebody, if another community is saying, okay, we're approving the whole amount, are they gonna stretch it out over the four years, because that's what we agreed to? Or is it, do you understand, how do you, how do you merge those plans together? Like, does it come to, it becomes our plan because we're the lowest of the?
All seven communities know the four steps that are involved and what the cost of each step is.
Okay, so they're all on the.
And if one community doesn't take the step, then everybody reverts back.
Okay, so nobody is trying to fix this in one year? Everybody's planning on doing this over four years?
Correct.
Okay, that, that's what I was asking.
There are some communities that desire to take the step next year and, and fix it entirely. However, I think as a compromise, they understand the magnitude of the ask, and they are compromising with the four-year plan.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all kind of on the same page as that, like.
We don't, we don't pass four-year budgets. I mean, the, the fire budget's gotta come to us every year. We're just figuring out how to come up with the money. So we could come up with the money and maybe not spend it.
But if we do a referendum, it's gonna be a four-year referendum, like this is how it's gonna implement.
This didn't start out in, in July or August as a $6 million referendum to make the complete change next year.
Which I don't.
It's where it started.
Yeah, I, I think that would be hard to, to get through.
Yeah.
I don't know, in my opinion, I see this going to referendum over, with, with the intent that it would increase over the four years, and that would be built into the referendum.
One referendum approves a four-year plan.
Yeah, the referendum would approve the four-year plan. That's, that's the vision.
It's easy to do with the fire fee. We can list the fire fee for each of the three years it would be. That's difficult to do with the levy limit, because what do you do? Do you get the ultimate amount approved? And then do you just educate the people and tell them that until we get to 2026, we'll be spending less than the ultimate amount? And even after the, after 2026, the fire department's budget is gonna keep going up.
Right.
But hopefully at that point, they could, well, if it's, I mean, at, at that point, they'd have to stick to within CPI plus 2%, and they should be able to do so once they're up to the proper staffing. And if they're within CPI plus 2%, then the levy can accommodate their increase.
Okay.
So at the budget meeting in two weeks, we should come prepared to discuss which way we want to go?
Yeah, which way we want to go with regards to, do we want to fund the ultimate staffing plan? If so, do we have to go to referendum? Now I have these as action items. And if we go to referendum, is it for a levy limit increase or a fee increase? And, um.
And if any of this math gets tweaked by the fire board, we'll need the updated numbers.
Fire board's not meeting until?
They're meeting the, this Thursday at 5:00 PM.
No, that's not when they're approving budgets for future years.
Correct. We've called a special meeting for November 10th, where we're gonna discuss. The only thing on the agenda is to discuss the, the out-years, the 2024 and beyond. So then we can get those statistics to you and financial figures to you before your December timeframe where you need to do that. And I'll just say that, I mean, I think I could speak for the other municipalities again, and the, the rest of them are really strongly considering the fee for the exact reasons that you brought up, Tom, where it allows you to, to do the, you know, 24, 25, and 26 plan where the fee is this here, and, and you move forward. Whereas the levy limit thing, that, if, if we see a failure point west of here, it's that it was all in one, and it, it, it needs to be phased in over time, so. Excuse me.
So is there any more information that, that the council needs to make those three decisions? Okay, well, then the next agenda, and then if the budget numbers do get tweaked, we would know those numbers for the second meeting in November.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're on to number 11, Mayor's Report. A, discussion on possible action on the following items. One, accept resignation of Courtney Grisania from the library board.
I have a move.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions passes. Item number two, confirm appointment of Ken Beckman to the citizen member position on the library board vacated by Courtney.
So moved.
Term to expire 2025.
So moved. Second.
Who had the second?
Paul.
Paul. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, new business, approval of vouchers payable, report for the following reported dates.
I did want to just point out a couple of things with this. So we were a little bit behind on the reports. They're all caught up now. Also with the reports, we have started to include some things that weren't included. So you'll see an increase in the pricing, in the amounts, and that's because we included some of those transmittals that were part of payroll that were not being included before. We weren't sure why that was the case. We felt transparency was necessary for that. So that did increase the overall amounts by a little bit on, on those voucher sheets. Other than that, that is all.
Somebody want to give me a motion?
Move to approve the vouchers for August through September. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes, city administrator.
I'll move to approve the, do we need three different ones?
Oh, I thought you did all three months.
Can I do that?
I thought you did. Is that what he did?
Could make a motion to approve one, two, and three?
I'll make a motion to approve two and three now.
I'll second two and three.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, two and three are also passed. Reporter, city official, city administrator, one reminder regarding the budget workshop Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, at 6:00 PM. If it's not in your calendar, please add it. Anything else, Tom?
Nope, Ken just gave my update.
You want to remind people if they want to attend, it's open to the public.
Oh, sure.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So it's at the, is it at?
I believe it's gonna be at Public Safety Building again, but check the agenda to be sure.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, big city clerk.
Um, election is coming up, less than a month away. We go to Heritage tomorrow, and then the following Tuesday, in-person absentee starts on October 25th. We will have poll workers helping us with that. I do expect some pretty high volume. Other than that, I think that's all I have for the election. Staffing, we have officially hired two folks for our vacant positions. One of them started today. Her name is Jennifer Townsend. She took over the administrative support assistant position. And then starting on October 31st, we have Crystal Turner in the deputy clerk position. She is not coming with any municipal experience, but I feel very confident that she has plenty of experience. She is a store, currently a store manager for the Johnson Creek Kohl's location, and has been for quite some time. So I think that her capability to learn and her eagerness to take in the position is gonna be a really good fit for the city of Delafield. I don't know if Tom was in on the interview for her. I don't know if he has anything to add.
Yeah, I would just say that she has extensive experience in HR areas and payroll areas, which are two of the primary functions that our deputy clerk serves for the city.
Great.
Sounds good. All right, C, city treasurer, refer you to the, refer you to the packet. D, council request for future agenda items. Going once, going twice, gone. 14, I'll refer you to correspondence. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 9:59. Thank you.